Members of the disclosure of peculiary and non peculiary interest only have had none received. Dave, do you wish to declare one? councillor Riley.
Yeah, I was just trying to get yourself on mute. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Chair, thank you. It's just a note that I am the lead member for HS2 for North Worcestershire Borough Council and for Worcestershire County Council and I have a personal interest in HS2.
Okay. Did you know your disposition, do you, on this, David?
No, just personal interest, no, please.
Just personal interest. Okay, thank you very much. Okay.
Sorry, Chair, I'd made you aware that I'd be leaving at four.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Pete. Right, I have no announcements this afternoon. I don't know if anything from the portfolio holds us to ring forward, but I have no announcements to make. So, the minutes of the previous meetings have been circulated. We have two. We have the 23rd of July and the 24th of June. Is it your wish that they be recorded as a true record of the meetings that took place? Yeah? Councillor Riley proposing, councillor Bowden, yes. Okay, is everyone in favour of that? Yep, wonderful. Thank you very much indeed. Right, we move on to public question time. I've had no questions sent to me. Are there any questions that want to be asked by members of the public? No? Okay. And general questions the portfolio holders, item three. Again, none sent to me, but I'm sure there are some questions that might want to be asked by members this afternoon. Any sitting hands going up? Councillor Bowden, Sarah.
Thank you, Chair. I believe Ham is in the meeting. I think I can see her initials at the bottom. I was just going to ask her how the library reopening is going. We're delighted to have the Lillington Library back open again. It's not quite open in the normal sense in that you can't really drop in, but it's good to have a computer work, that people can book and be able to take books back and click and collect. So I just wondered how things were going generally and how usage was going in our libraries.
Can you see me, everyone?
No, no, we can't yet, Cam.
I can see me, but as long as you can hear me, that's amazing.
Afternoon, Cam. Yes, we can now.
So, just to say, libraries are doing really, really well. You know, right through all of the lockdown and, you know, even now, we've had a really, really good uptake on using our libraries. And I think that actually, if there was an example of, you know, the library service really connecting with community, this has been it. So, it's doing really well. We've worked with Lillington and also the smaller libraries as well, and we're slowly getting there. I know Polesworth Library sent me an email just last week and they've set up a webcam and it's amazing, just telling you about Polesworth and, you know, what they've got there, going on there, what's going on for Polesworth. So, that's a shout out for Polesworth Library if anybody's watching. But, really good news right across Warwickshire. Sarah, thank you for asking.
You know, I'm a huge fan of the libraries and I do like to just keep an eye and see how things are going. So, well done.
Really well, really well. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you. And when you said about a webcam, Cam, I'm surprised councillor Crum didn't come in with one of his puns there. I might beat him to it. Councillor Riley.
It's an old one.
Councillor Riley, you've signaled.
Yes, Chair. Could Cam do a briefing note on the good stuff that's going on? Because clearly if it is happening, we should be rolling it out to the other libraries as well.
The intention is to roll it out to all the libraries eventually, but we do have the borrow box service, the click and collect service. So, there is quite a bit going on within the libraries. You know, we're still doing the videos virtually. There is just so much going on with the libraries, David. I'm happy to send you a briefing note. And in fact, I think it'll be good that everybody gets a briefing note to see, give them an update of what's going on. Happy to do that.
Great. Thank you, Cam. Lovely to hear some good news as well. Any other questions? I can't see anybody else indicating. Right, okay. Right, we'll move over to item number four, page 15 of your agendas. That's the work programme for noting. Are there any observations on that or is everybody happy with that? Wonderful. We will note that then. Okay, let's move on to item number five, the first substantive item on the agenda, which is the One Organisational Plan, Year End Performance Report to the 31st of March this year. And I think Steve, I think Steve, you're presenting this this afternoon.
All right, thank you, councillor. I'd love to keep my ear. I just want to open opening remarks short, to the point really. This is a year-end performance report on agenda five for the financial of April 19 to March 2020. And as usual with the reports that you've seen of your scrutiny before, it sets out the particular measures of the 64 key business measures that we've got, the 33 measures within the remit of this committee. And on page 18, it sets out the headline performance of those that achieved targets and those that didn't. And then I would draw your attention to the annual review actions described in the grey tables on page 20 onwards. But as I say, this is a year-end performance report. I'm happy to take questions on any of that. If of course there are specific questions regarding specific measures in the services, then there are obviously other officers on this, in this committee today who might need to respond. But that's all I'll say as part of introduction.
Thank you, Steve. Right, well, I'll open it to members. First member who's indicated is councillor Fal. Judy, if you'd like to.
I should know this, but I can't remember. How often do we look at our performance measures and readjust them after? There's been a lot with Covid, but is it an annual look at the measures or is it more often?
I can answer that one. We do look on an annual basis and the report that's to come next on the agenda explains the changes that we made to those measures. We'll also be making changes to the measures based on the recovery plan of the council that was signed off at Cabinet last Thursday. And we also gave a commitment at that Cabinet, I think we may have said it before, that we would look to review the measures in line with recovery and post-Covid for the next financial year as well.
Thank you, Steve. Does that satisfy you, Judy?
Yeah, as I said, I thought it was that. I just didn't know whether we were going to six monthly measures or whether it was just too complicated because of Covid. But that's fine, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Riley, Dave, your question's next.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Chair, I'm interested in an officer view that under 2.2, we're missing 40% of the performance targets, which obviously for an organisation which is presenting itself as a competent and effective organisation raises a concern. Do officers have any to you?
I mean, there are, I think there's a commentary throughout the report. I'll hand over to Cam on this as well. She raised her hand. But clearly, we've got to make sure that we address the review action. I noticed a significant improvement in the first quarter report that comes next, and we can cover that. So, clearly, it has been affected by some of the Covid-19 work, Covid-19 impacts. And then there's a whole host of impacts described in the report in the remainder of it as well. So, it's there. We need to make sure that we get a better performance next year. And that's my view, but I'm happy to refer to the portfolio holder next.
Thank you. Cam, you wanted to come in on this.
Thanks, thanks, Chair. I just wanted to say, although it seems considerable, those measures, you know, performance is like a revolving door, revolving and evolving, because as we change the organisation, some measures will change, some measures will drop, and then some measures will come in. So, it's a constant, as you can imagine, and I use this phrase quite a lot, revolving door. So although it looks like some of the performances dropped, what I would say is, and Steve has touched on it, that we've got quite a few things going on going forward. We know that we've had teams stop, stop and start during Covid lockdown in order, and I'll give you the example, we had libraries, staff going and helping in the shielding pubs, for an example. And, you know, we had some of, again, some of our, even Steve's team in the business team, working with the comms team. So we had a lot of staff that had moved around the organisation to help other areas. That's point one. Point two is, and Steve just touched on this and we approved it at Cabinet last week, performance indicators are going to change. They will change based on the recovery programme as we move forward. And again, overall, we have got targets within this report which are on page 20 and 21 onwards, which are of a concern, but we do know that these have been falling behind for some time, even before Covid hit. So, these are the areas that we're working on to improve. I'm happy to take further questions to you, Chair, if you wish.
Thank you, Cam. That's very kind of you. Barnaby, you've indicated you'd like to speak, and then I think councillor Riley would like to come back in. So, Barnaby, join on on the next, please.
Thank you, Chair. And as you'd expect, I just wanted to make a comment on the far specific ones. And again, I'll make way for the portfolio holder if he wants to overrule me. Two of those, number of fire-related deaths and number of fire-related injuries are low numbers, but this one, I'll put my hand up, it's entirely my fault. And I refuse to set a target to zero, rather, I refuse to set a target of anything other than zero, because I won't be quoted on the line aiming for an acceptable number of fire deaths. So, unfortunately, we only have to lose one individual fire in 365 days, we miss our target, but I still think that's what I think we'd be doing. Hope that councillors understand that.
And I absolutely agree with that view, Chair.
Thank you. I think there won't be anyone who disagrees with you on that, Barnaby, as well. Thank you for that. Andy, did you want to add a comment on that for Dave from the back end?
Yeah, definitely not overall, Mr Briggs. Augment, I think is the word. Yeah, fire-related deaths are a really difficult one to report on. And I totally support Mr Briggs's comments. Again, we're facing a lot of events. It's on prevention, protection and response, prevention in particular. And there have been cases in the past where we responded within the target time and it's been too late. And in many cases, in fire deaths, it's too late. The person has already died before we've got the call. So, that's why our efforts are on prevention. And we're bringing in new methods as well. We've now got some smokers that are on the run now, even featured recently. And then there's different initiatives, for example, potential portable sprinklers, lights, that for people that are bed bound, who smoke and have lots of emollients and air pressured beds. So, again, those people, we're trying to take particular care with. So, yes, it's always difficult, but looking at it in the context, yes, I think we're doing a great job. So, full support, Mr Briggs there.
Okay. Dave, I'll bring you back in and then Sarah after that.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. It's an interesting conversation, isn't it? I don't agree that performance is a revolving door. I think performance is a very clear business model for the organisation. And I think it's unfortunate we're going to wipe away a slew of performance indicators that we aren't delivering against and replace them, and then therefore take out the history. Everybody knows that we've set ourselves some very challenging targets. And I think for the last four years, we've struggled in all of the performance meetings I've sat in and come against those targets. And there's no problem with finding targets challenging if you have a clear view about how you are going to address those concerns. And the example we talked about, Andy has supplemented, just saying now, all of the positive intervention that is seeking to go forward is really organisational healthy. But I still have this ongoing concern, and it isn't an easy time of organisational change, that Worcestershire County Council has to improve its performance.
Thank you, councillor. Okay. I've got councillor Corr and councillor Crum. You're both still indicating, I don't know if they're legacy hands. And councillor Bowden, you had your hand up. Did you want to come in or are you okay?
Yes, I'm not sure what happened to my hand there. Went down, it's on the cord. I was just going to come on the fire death, and I think this is always a tricky one, because sometimes, if somebody's, I mean, the famous one, Barnaby may not know about, was a couple of years ago, an aircraft crashed in the south of the county. Unfortunately, two people were on that plane and they died. And I think they were a couple of miles from the Oxfordshire border. And it was judged, it was the fire that had killed them, not the crash. And therefore, they counted as a fire deaths. And yet, unless our firefighters had been running round the south of the county with a blanket, you know, four firefighters were on each corner trying to catch the plane as it came down, there's absolutely nothing we could have done to prevent that. So I've always felt that that can be, I mean, if the service can be shown to be at fault, then that's a different matter. But when some of these deaths are really, really, I mean, that one with the plane, there was nothing we could have done, absolutely nothing at all. And we have, the fire panel about a year ago, I think, did look at some of the people. We had a little spurt of sadly people who died. And we actually did a really close look at all of those cases to see what lessons could be learnt. And some of the stuff that Andy's talked about, about the sprinklers over people's beds and emollients and all that sort of stuff, we looked very carefully. And I know the brigade has brought in an awful lot of measures to try and stop those really, really difficult, tricky cases where, you know, if somebody's, it would be too far and avoid you about, if somebody's covered in creams and emollients and they're smoking in bed, they drop a cigarette, there's not a very good likelihood of an outcome. So I do think some of these are, the fire rescue are very, very tricky. The only other point I would make, this is one of those reports that's really, really difficult to look at in black and white. And I've just, I've got the report on my iPad, so I can see the colours. But it's actually very, very difficult to tell improving, static and declining apart, because, you know, the colours are also similar in grey. Obviously, the difficult times at the moment, but I think perhaps if you wanted two representations, people should be looking at it on their iPads or whatever, or getting colour copies, because they are very, very difficult to tell the difference. Because without anything in colour, I got my colours mixed up, because I couldn't quite tell them apart. There's a message coming from Maggie saying she can't get onto Teams.
Yes, I've just seen that. Can we, John, can we get a link out to Maggie O'Rourke, please, councillor O'Rourke?
Yes.
Okay. It's just coming in the chat here.
Okay.
Okay. Maggie, you're obviously watching, so I had noticed you weren't here. We're sending in a link to you. Hopefully, we can get you into the meeting. Pete, councillor Butlerlin.
Oh, thank you, Chair. I kind of have to defend the situation of performance measures in terms of 40%. I'm trying to kind of create the correct analogy of the position we're in. And I look on Covid situation as someone has basically dropped a grenade in the corner of the room of an organisation that's running quite well and improving. And you can either ignore the fact that the grenade has been dropped in the corner and we have to address it in sucking materials, resources from elsewhere in the room to deal with Covid, or you don't. And I take it into account. So, I'm more inclined to basically take into account that a grenade has been dropped. And acknowledge also that this will have an effect on our performance targets. Because as anybody knows, one, it's affected the whole organisation, one in terms of basically drawing in resources from all departments in terms of dealing with it. And secondly, a lot of things would not be able to deliver as a result of Covid. And I'll give you one example, and that's roads, construction and improvements were put on hold for a considerable amount in time until Covid distancing measures. And when you kind of impose distancing measures on the whole of the organisation, one is going to affect our performance and our ability to perform. Now, when one looks at the way which we've, if you look just at Covid itself and how we performed, we performed remarkably remarkably well, to the point that central government looks upon Warwickshire as a benchmark authority in terms of the way which we performed. So, I take the view that although we have to be critical in terms of that kind of lack of performance, we also have to take into account the kind of grenade that was dropped in the corner of the room. So, I think that's the correct way of looking at it. Once we get the other side of this and the kind of the grenade has got less impact on the authority, then we can start being critical and resetting those KBS for the future. But to a large extent, the fact that we was kind of an efficient authority basically showed that we were able to kind of deal with that crisis. So, I think that statement needs making.
Thank you, Pete. I think the comment was made, we did probably five years' worth of transformation in about six weeks. So, okay, I've got Cam indicating to come in next, and then Dave wants to come back in as well. So, Cam.
Yeah, just to say, if I may, Chair, again, Pete virtually said what I was going to say, and you've just finished it off by talking about my transformation piece. But what I did want is also add, is that, as I mentioned earlier, that we gave a commitment at Cabinet, that we would have a cross member party group to develop the right measures and targets for 2122. And this is about, again, tackling the priorities and the performance issues of the council. And also, it's about tracking the performance of the recovery plan that Steve talked about. So there is quite a lot of work to be done. And, you know, and if you are interested in performance, what I would say is, get on that task and finish in cross party group, because it will be helpful. Thanks, Chair.
Okay, Dave, do you want to come back in on this?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Totally understand everything that's being said about Covid and Covid's impact on performance. This is the performance year, April 19 to March 20, so this performance is pre-Covid. So, I think it's just worth noting.
Yeah, take that, Dave. But there were some impacts in March this year with Covid. And I think we'd already started to see some changes. I certainly had to make some organisational changes with the things that I was up to. And I think that applied to a lot of people. So, yeah, I take that. But we were catching the back of it. Keith, I know you're not a member of this panel, but you're indicating you wish to speak. I assume I can take this question?
Yeah, just a quick question, if you can hear me. I just saw the broadband stuff on there. And broadband must have been incredibly useful during Covid. And I'm wondering if we need to raise our targets considerably, so that actually we become a totally digital county? Because, yeah, I've done a lot more on broadband. And we've had two simultaneous team meetings at our house sometimes. So, I thought it was worth talking broadband.
Right. Well, I knew Cam's handed it. But that point, I just knew. So, Cam and then Craig.
Well, I don't mind giving way to the officer, to be honest, Chair. So, because he'll be able to tell you even more than I could. But it does excite me, this topic, as you know. But I will put my hand down and let Craig speak.
Thank you, Chair.
Thanks for the question, councillor Condon Corr. And we are making significant progress, as the report talks about, in terms of broadband rollout. However, it's an area of our work where we're entirely dependent on our providers in BT. I was forgetting the name. Raising our target wouldn't have an impact on increasing homes, because we're entirely dependent on where they deliver, at which time and to which priority. We are well ahead of where we need to be, however, which is a massive good news story. We're also starting really exciting work, which I think our portfolio was referring to, in terms of further reach in fibre and further reach in mobile with technologies such as 5G, to try and mitigate the impact of BT following their plan, not what we as a council set for them. I'll just say one more thing in reassurance. Please, that is not an excuse. This is the reality of dealing with one provider who rolls out those commissions for us, no matter how closely they work with us. The fact they managed to turn around that rollout so quickly, right in the midst of a pandemic, is a huge credit to them. But thanks for giving way, Cam. I think it's been a new sort of Warwickshire, will increasingly put a pressure on, but I can't guarantee we'll roll out more homes.
Thank you, Craig. Right, I haven't got any more indicators on this item, so we will move on, if that is the case, to item six, which is quarter one monitoring report. And again, I think Steve, I think you've got this one as well, working your arse this afternoon.
Well, yes. No, it's, well, it's a similar format report for the first quarter of this current financial year. And you've got, again, the information presented, the headlines in paragraph 2.3 on page 30, which give you the headlines of where the performance on each of the KBS of this, the remit of this group are currently reporting. And obviously, then there is explanation further on, particularly in the grey boxes in the later pages of this report, explaining the narrative of what the current performance means. Again, as with the previous format, we should go to, that's all I need really to say to introduce it. We should go to questions. Thank you.
Okay. So, thank you for that, Steve. So, over to you, members. Any questions on the report? I mean, there's some great bits there and some of the finances that might fairly grim reading, isn't there, with the effect of Covid on us? Sarah, you're not still all wrong.
Yes, I'm just wondering, at the beginning of the report, page 30, bottom page 30 of the chart there, and then we can see on track and not on track, and they're not available. And there's an awful lot not available. Is that, and in fact, there's more not available this quarter. Is that due to Covid and the fact that everything just sort of had to have to stop and therefore people were not able to report? But even in previous years, we had probably a third actually not reporting. And I just wondered whether the same ones always not report or is this normal? It looked normal.
If I can, if I may answer, Chair, it is normal. We have quite a few measures in the crop of measures that we have that are only reported at one point in the time of the year. If they're a particular survey or they're gathered at one point in the particular year, really. So, only the ongoing measures, where we measure on a daily or weekly or monthly basis, do you see the reporting. So, this is quite normal for our suite of measures.
Okay. Happy with that, Sarah? Thank you. Okay. Councillor Cook, John, you're on next.
Yes, thank you very much. On page 31, the third bullet point down on item 2.4, it relates to the number of fire-related injuries for the first April to the 30th of June, fire and fibre injuries, which is a reduction on seven recorded in the same period of 2019. I'm just asking, and it says Worcestershire are on top performers to this measure. Do we normally sort of keep figures based on periods like first of April to the 30th of June? Is it a three monthly figure or something? And basically, what would that have read this time last year? If that's not the impossible question for you to answer without notice.
Shall I take that, Chair?
I didn't say yes, I was going to, if you wouldn't mind.
Well, in answer to the first bit, it's quarter ones, I guess we would normally do it annually. And then annually. I can get you the figures for last year, councillor. I remember I don't have them to hand.
No, that's fine. Well, I was looking at the page beforehand, it did occur to me, because it was a startling reduction. And I'm just wondering if, is it a Covid reduction, to be fair? But anyway, there we are.
I think establishing cause and effect is difficult. What we can do is we've had a reduction in serious incidents during the Covid period.
Yeah.
Peeling off spotting fires earlier and therefore we're getting called earlier, if that makes sense.
Good. More people at home. Thank you very much. Thank you. Sarah, your hands up. Is that a legacy hand from last time?
I would like to ask another question, if I may. I was just thinking about a question. I mean, obviously, for fire rescue, Covid must have been a very strange time in that, you know, for the first couple of months of your, this quarter, people were literally locked down at home. at home. So I assume that fires went down. But my impression, looking at social media, and obviously it's only an impression, is actually since lockdown started to ease, there have been quite a lot of quite serious incidents. And I don't want to be thinking about that, but I'm just wondering if lockdown and Covid is actually going to have some really weird effect on the data that, again, stuff that you would find very difficult to control. I mean, there seem to be some quite nasty car accidents happening at the moment as well, I guess, which maybe people are going back on the road in cars that they haven't checked, or they're not used to driving, perhaps as they did. And so I just wondered, any thoughts on that? It just seems like a very strange time in all sorts of ways.
Well, Barney's indicated he'll take that one, and John, you've still got your handle.
Thanks, Chair. I think the councillors are pretty much on the money with the road traffic collisions. It's either vehicles not having been checked, or people becoming unfamiliar with what was something that they did without thinking about it. We've got also, we've got some industries and processes restarting, which have been shut down for a while, and quite often the mice get into the wiring and so on and so forth, and then they develop. So yes, it'll be something of a statistical anomaly, it'll be interesting to see what it looks like at the end of the year. So yeah, a dip in activity followed by some unusual activity, and against a background of some individuals taking the opportunity to assume that the rules across the board don't apply themselves, so probably say as much as a non-recorded on ending of that.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, I have no other indicators of questions, if that is the case. We will move on to item seven on the agenda, which is HS2, operational considerations for stage construction. Barney, I think you're presenting this for us.
Indeed, I am, Chair, thank you. It follows on from the verbal brief that I gave to councillors, I think at the last meeting or the last one, I've lost track to certain degree. I hope the report speaks for itself. I've got a slight update on it, if I may, because obviously the report had to make its way through the system. So we do now have confirmation of where the larger construction compounds are going in Warwickshire. We've got six of those, which I can list off if councillors are interested, I'm looking at the screen. In no particular order, working, I suppose, north from south, we will have the larger construction compounds at Kingsbury, on the M6 loop, close to where our existing CFN workshops are, the M6 where the new station is going in, Kenilworth A46, Fosway near off Churchill Road, and Long Echington Way, which we were the tunnel boring machine, we're arriving in the next few weeks stroke months. And the bit is that the preparation for the tunnel boring machine at Long Echington is already underway, so you may see some machinery going there, it's not the TBM itself, but it is the preparation for it. And the councillors may have picked up that our aerial appliance went out to Crackley, near Kenilworth, assisted police with removing protesters from trees. I just want to stress at that point that we're providing access to fellow rescue services and not taking part in law enforcement activities, we don't do that. Other than that, I'll take questions, if I may, Chair.
Thank you very much. Okay, the report's before you, ladies and gentlemen, any questions on it? Councillor Cook, John?
I'm just remembering to turn my microphone on. Can I ask, it's an interesting report this to me, purely and simply, we've had some issues relating to road closures. And I wanted to ask, Barney, when HS2 wants to close a road, and what's happening in Burton Green, as you will probably be aware, there's quite a long detour required to get to Burton Green, if you want to go from, for instance, the Kenilworth side. Did they actually, how does the consultation, give us an idiot's guide, because I'm an idiot when it comes to these things, as to how the consultation with you would go? Would they say, look, we are, would they say, look, this is, we want to close this road? And of course, there's a big protest in Burton Green, because they did not believe that it should have been closed for anything like the length of the time for what was proposed. That's not a matter that I wanted to discuss there. How does the consultation, do you say, actually, that is going to give us significant problems? Can you either not close it for so long, or can you do it a different way? What scope is there for you to actually get engaged in it?
Okay, Chair, thank you. Generally, there is good scope, you'll see on page 40, 2.7, and onwards, there's a bit there about the Washington Council, the wider traffic liaison group, which is going to be working well. And the observation I'd give is that HS2 have to give less notice of intended roadworks than other works are being done, they've got some fairly wide-ranging protocols in place on that. Our experience so far is that they have been very good with us, very professional. In terms of the mechanics of the consultation, they say we're going to close this road, you're quite right, the conversations that you would anticipate and that you just detail, then go ahead about, well, when are you closing, how long are you closing it for? Generally, when they are closing a road, they have some form of construction access around it anyway, which has hard standing, and so far, we've been able to negotiate protocols whereby we can use, even if it's closed generally public, we can use those construction roads, if I can call them that, to get through. And we haven't had to use them yet, but we do have some fairly wide-ranging powers and the Fire and Rescue Services Act that we could deploy, should we need to do so, which would be an interesting clash of primary legislation, but we've not had to be there yet so far, everything's working well in partnership or in least in consultation.
I'm grateful for that, Barney, I'm grateful for the fact that if you push pain to shove, you would be able to get there without necessarily going on the three, four miles of the burden. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, John. Right, I've got three further questions, so I indicated councillor Riley, Dave.
Yeah, thanks, Adrian. I think the first thing I want to say is that the progress that Fire and Rescue have made over the last 12 to 18 months in picking up HS2 agenda has been absolutely first-class. And in conversations that I'm having with Chief Arson, clearly the reports that I'm reading here, I have no doubt that Fire and Rescue at Warwickshire are now having a grip of the enormity of what's going to come. I think it's worth noting, and actually, one of the challenges now is that HS2 are moving into construction, and as a result, plans are now changing by the day. So compounds, Barney's talked about compounds, and for example, last week in my division, a compound popped up with 100 parking spaces and a 30-foot crane, which will have significant impacts on the IRMP when they look at the local risk management. And that's only one compound in North Warwickshire, we're going to have 40 compounds. So the enormity of what's coming on, I think this board needs to recognise the pressure that will be on Fire and Rescue colleagues in terms of managing the risk going forward. I'll leave you with that, really, Chair. HS2 is a fantastic project, but it is like nothing we have ever seen before, and just the sheer, the sheer risk it will present in terms of onsite working is phenomenal. The final point, I was going to make, Chair, was 216, which was about Fire and Rescue Services engagement in community safety and protest management. Together with Jonathan Toya and Andy Crumber's portfolio, I may want to say something, we're seriously looking at the moment about how we can bring HS2 into the community safety strategic assessment process. At the moment, we're probably looking specifically at a dedicated community safety assessment around the challenges of HS2, and that would be in its widest context, so it wouldn't only be onsite safety, it would be the road safety issues that John picks up, and it would also be managing the consequences, because as John quite rightly says, so much traffic is going to be placed within, to a road within three kilometres of this line, that they will have major consideration for all urgency service attendance on key arterial routes. But great piece of work, Chair, huge step forward, so very pleased.
Dave, I'm delighted you're pleased with that, I know it's something that interests you greatly, and it is, it's great that this has started all to come together. I've got two further indicator speakers. Cam, you've indicated you'd like to ask a question.
Thanks, Chair, just going back to road closures, if I may. I've noticed, driving along Rugby Road, and that's, so from Prince Thorpe along the Rugby Road through to Leamington, Western Under Wetherley have had protesters outside its site there, and I'm not sure if you're aware, but the other day I was going, and I wasn't going particularly fast, but a protester was in the middle of the road, and there is a sharp bend as you turn out, just come out of Western Under Wetherley, and you head towards that site. So if I hadn't slowed down, because I'd seen him flying a white flag, I think I might have ran him over. But, you know, it is a concern, because actually, people putting their lives at risk, especially in that bend, and, you know, it's a worry. So, you know, if we are going to close down, or we know of, you know, protesters protesting at certain times, then I think we need to know about it, really, because just from a sheer safety point of view. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Cam. Barney, would you want to comment on any of that, or?
I hesitate to say, Chair, and I hesitate to speak about my colleagues in Worcestershire Police, but also whether or not in the meeting. Generally, there's a breakpoint between property that is now HS2, and HS2 are responsible for the security of their own property, and clearly Worcestershire Police are responsible for what's outside so far, so obvious. I guess what the councillor may be referring to is something that's almost spilled over, and then there's a grey area, which is absolutely, we'll need to try and address, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sarah, who have you indicated next?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks to Barney for the report, it's a very comprehensive and clear and well-written report. And I think passions are running very, very high in this area. Where I'm sitting now, HS2 is probably about, I don't know, two miles, two and a half miles away, something like that, not in my division, actually in Castle Redford's division. But Covington Parish Council, which we both attend, because we both represent parts of Covington, HS2 is regularly talked about, and, you know, many of the parish councils on the route are very concerned, very affected, very anti, you know, had HS2 along to their parish council, which hasn't always gone terribly well. And I think now, you can just see the difference now, the activity is really, really stepping up. There's a lot of protests going on, there's a lot of protesters hanging on trees and in Covington Woods, and Burton Green, and Crackley Woods, and all the rest of it. So passions are running very, very high. And, you know, I'm just hoping that Fire and Rescue and the police don't get caught in the middle of something that you're having to deal with, but it isn't your responsibility, it isn't your fault. You know, Worcestershire Fire Rescue didn't decide to build a high-speed rail line. And so I think there are their issues, and I think this is going to go on for a long, long time. We were talking about Bob earlier, I mean, Bob, I think, was the HS2 person on the County Council for a while, and I always remember him saying at a cabinet meeting, the construction phase would last for at least 10 years. And, you know, this is going to go on for a very long time. And one thing that concerns me, I don't know what he thinks about this, is the number of increased lorries. I think there's, HS2 lorries appear to be travelling through Leamington at night, or during the day, and I think one thing we'd be concerned about is lorries coming through from the western direction, and then down Kenilworth Road. And I think particularly for that, they're building these tram sort of trackways, aren't there, across countryside, so that their vehicles will go off-road. But again, I think there's all sorts of issues, and I've asked them if they cannot move lorries when the children are coming back from somewhere to school, for example. There's all sorts of clashes between people, lorries, equipment, some of the members today have already referred to that. So, you know, I would hope that we could get regular reports on how things are going, because I think we're only seeing the very, very tip of it. And I believe this in Warwickshire, I mean, this in Warwickshire for a good number of miles, I'm not sure if it's in the report, but probably, I don't know, I hesitate to guess now, 100 miles, something like that? I know it goes to the Kenilworth South constituency for just about the length of a marathon. So there's a lot of stuff, and we'll be doing this for a very, very long time. So well done on the report, well done for what you're doing, and please come and have regular updates as to how it's going. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Yeah, I think that's a good point, that this ought to come back as part of the reporting process of this panel. So if that could be included in the updates, to come back to us from the fire service, we'd appreciate that, because it helps us to help you, and that's an important, important way of working partnership. Okay, I've got two further speakers, councillor Bocklin, Pete.
Thank you, Chair. Just to give you an indication of how much longer we've got, between us and Buckinghamshire, we've got 60% of the line, which is kind of gives you some context. So 60%, we've got a significant impact on Warwickshire, if you look at the map, it's top to bottom. So, yeah, it's significant. I know someone who's actually doing some subcontract work for HS2, and what came to my, he kind of informed me that the demonstrators, which are significant in various areas. But he says they've made it too comfortably, he says they're providing with toilets and washing facilities for the demonstrators. But the question I might, and on top of that, these demonstrators are vandalising contractors' subcontractors' equipment, and this is the livelihoods of the people and businesses in Warwickshire. What I would like to ask is, could you assure me that Warwickshire County Council isn't basically kind of picking up the bill for those washing and toilet facilities for the demonstrators?
I don't know who can answer that for you, Pete. If we can't answer that now, how can we get that back?
It's outside of my competence, I'm sorry.
Okay, right, we'll get that back to you, Pete.
All right, here.
Okay. And finally, I've got councillor Riley, Dave.
Cheers, Adrian. Yeah, I know. I always said that HS2 is like an organisation like no other, and the vast majority of the organisation's powers are invested in the act. So all of our concerns about road safety, actually, as a highways authority, we have literally no influence unless we can prove that HS2's proposals around road management and road use are dangerous. So we have an excellent HS2 team, supported by a number of very capable staff, and Caroline Burrows, who many of you will know, does all of the approvals, and you know that Caroline is not one to roll over, but it is just a challenge of the act. As Sarah said, the intention is that Warwickshire Construction will be predominantly dominated by a series of haul roads, which will take all of the heavy HS2 traffic off the road network, but that doesn't mean all of the HS2 traffic. So it is a clear case, particularly from the fire service perspective, of making sure that our IRMP is spot on when it comes to talk about this, because one of the clear things that's come out of the conversation with our chief fire officer is that there is a concern about capacity within the fire service to actively, ongoingly manage the risk and assess the risk and all the rest of it. So when we're thinking about the additional support that might go into our fire and rescue service, then as we move forward, it's something we should think about, to organise and see whether we can support.
Thank you. Barney.
Just to say, Chair, absolutely, I think that's probably provided a very good segue into my colleague Ben, who's joined us for the next bit.
I was thinking exactly the same, it was almost like an introduction from councillor Riley to the next item on there. So as there's no further questions, we will move on, which is to the update regarding the development of the Integrated Risk Management Plan Advisory Panel, and that's Ben, who's going to be presenting that.
Thanks, Chair, good afternoon, everyone, it's good to be here this afternoon. So just want to give you a verbal update on the development of the Integrated Risk Management Plan Assurance Panel. But the plan is for a paper to go to Cabinet on the 8th of October this year to implement this particular panel. It's very, very similar to a previous IRMP task and finish group that was established within Warwickshire County Council, which was a task and finish group with cross-party membership and officers, and we're looking really to replicate that more on a permanent basis. It's also on the back of documents like the State of Fire Report, which was the annual assessment of Fire and Rescue Services in England 2019, which was written by Sir Tom Windsor, which talks about the fact that fire authorities need to ensure that there is the right assurances, that the Fire and Rescue Service are working effectively and efficiently with their resourcing links to their IRMP. Service are working effectively and efficiently with their resourcing linked to their RMP. Um, and also the LGA have published some guidance around governance as well. Um, so I've been working with, uh, Councillor Crump and Councillor Warwick and appreciate their time on producing this paper, uh, around RMP Assurance Panel. Um, and the proposal is that this is created as a permanent panel, um, that it's a cross-party RMP Assurance Panel. Um, and they have the remit of, um, the overview and monitoring of the Warwickshire Fire Rescue Service Integrated Risk Management Plan. Um. The, it's important that the Chief Fire Officer utilising his technical and operational competence will develop and produce the Integrated Risk Management Plan. Um, but then the Chief Fire Officer will present that to County Council for approval, um, for the next twelve months and the Chief Fire Officer will, um, then deliver RMP on a day-to-day basis. Um, so this panel, uh, is being proposed with the Chair being the portfolio holder. Um, and this panel will act as a critical friend, uh, in order to challenge and monitor the delivery of the Integrated Risk Management Plan, um, to use both qualitative and quantitative evidence to understand the performance of the Fire Rescue Service, uh, to provide that level of scrutiny, um, to the Integrated Risk Management Plan. Um, and to hopefully enable us and, um, remove any potential barriers in achieving the objectives that are set out in the RMP as well. Um, there's also an option for, um, the Chair of the panel, the portfolio holder, to seek a peer from another Fire Rescue Service, to be a guest on the panel, to again provide that peer learning, peer assessment from other Fire Rescue Services as well, which we, we think will be very, very beneficial to us. So that's really a brief summary of, of what we're looking to present to Cabinet on the eighth of October, then implement this Integrated Risk Management Plan Assurance Panel as soon as possible after Cabinet should it be agreed. So open to, and ask any questions.
Thank you very much, Ben. Uh, I've got Sarah indicated she'd like to speak.
Thank you. I think that's, um, that, that, that sounds really, really good. I think some of us have been involved with Fire and Rescue for a while, um, and have got some knowledge and expertise. And I think, uh, as you say, critical friends, um, overview, I think is really, really important. Do I understand you to say this will be a permanent panel rather than time limited? Because I think previously, um, feeling when probably not the last election passed to one before, there was a feeling of sort of sweeping away of existing, um, panels and stuff and then, and then they were allowed to come back on like a time limited basis. Um, so we have had this sort of old situation of a, a panel being in place to discuss the, the, how the IRMP was going to be put together and then we all had to break up and then bringing us back again. Um, the other thing that you'd be able to answer for me is, I've seen obviously the advertising now on social media that the IRMP is open for consultation. Um, and I just wondered if you could give me some time scales and how you're trying to engage with the public, um, and get their views on the IRMP, which is obviously a lot trickier at the moment than it would be normally. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Ben, you could come back on that.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, so, yeah, we are looking to establish this as a permanent group because we think the RMP is one of those areas that's key legislative requirement for us as Fire and Rescue Services. So we think that, that ongoing scrutiny, support, uh, is vitally important for us moving forward, uh, hence why, why we've decided to take it as a Cabinet paper, um, to Cabinet to get that established. Um, in relation to the Integrated Risk Management Plan, yes, we are out of consultation at the moment around the five proposals, um, for the Integrated Risk Management Plan moving forward. Um, the, uh, engagement with all members of the community is vitally important for us. We're really trying to work hard. So we've produced an excellent animation video that's going to be shared through social media. It, it is absolutely fantastic. So, um, you know, the communications team within Warwickshire County Council, uh, working with the RMP team in, in Fire Rescue have put this together and it's absolutely fantastic. So we're really hoping that'll engage a wide range of, of different groups and stakeholders. Um, we'll also be using social media more generally, we'll also be writing to key stakeholders as well. Uh, but I guess there is an ask for us here in Fire Rescue, uh, if there's any support that we could get for, um, engaging, um, the diverse communities of Warwickshire through your networks and through your influence, then, then that would be absolutely brilliant as well because it is absolutely key. Um, I think we got two or three hundred responses to the last one. Um, I'm personally, and I know that Kieran and Barn are also very keen to get a much higher response this time.
Will you be, thanks very much for all that. Will you be, firstly, I think it would be useful if the, if the link to the video could be sent out to all members, because obviously not all members necessarily follow all your social media like I do, uh, ably with interest. And secondly, will town and parish councils be part of that consultation? Because I would have thought that would be a, I can't, I can't remember if they were consulted last time. Um, but it seems to be they would be an automatic, hopefully an automatic part of your consultation. Thank you.
Well, I can answer, Sarah, that my parish has had the invite already to comment on it. It went out from the Combe team of the county. So Ben, do you want to follow that up?
Yeah, just to echo, Chair, that yes, absolutely, we make sure we engage the, the wide range of, uh, districts, uh, borough councils, uh, to make sure that, uh, everyone is engaged and social media, absolutely, we'll make sure the video circulated.
Thank you, Ben. Right, uh, we've got a few indicated speakers here. Andy, are you, uh, wish you to follow up on that as a portfolio holder? Do you want to come in next?
Yes, just very briefly, um, Councillor Bird, I've sent you the link to the animation already. Um, but yeah, I'm sure Ben and the team will, will get it sent out to all members. It's, it's great, great work. Um, yeah, the critical challenge, um, yeah, I think that's really great. Warwickshire Fire and Rescue already do that. I think it's, is it the three services, Ben, Barn, um, challenge? So again, a bit of a reciprocal arrangement and again, coming in with a fresh pair of advisors outside of the organisation, I think it's really great. Uh, and the other thing, I think this group that we've had in the past, it has been really positive, worked really well, worked teacly as well as the Covid groups, it's not better in the past. Um, unless we've got slightly di, di, distracted where the M45 was, I think Councillor Bird will remember that one. Um, but yeah, it's, it's a really, really good team. Uh, we've had it in the past and I can see this working really well. Um, really positive movement and for it to be a permanent, um, fixture, a part of that County Council is great. And again, as, as Councillor Riley mentioned with HS2, we've got an IRMP that takes into account the risks of HS2, which will be a dynamic one and getting information on a regular basis. Um, so again, I think that's an opportunity for everybody to get into this. So, yeah, pretty positive and I'm, I'm happy to chair and, um, give them the benefit of the occasional punt while I'm chairing this as well, but, uh, thank you.
Will, will we have the delight of your Conference City shirt while you're chairing it, uh, councillor?
No, Councillor Warwick, I've, as you can see, I've got my shirt in time today. Um, and you're in formal meetings with, uh, Mr Brook, who happens to be an Aston Villa fan. Um, so, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll pass on that one.
Talk about being caught in the middle. Yeah, right. Next, Councillor Riley, who has indicated he wishes to speak. Dave.
Yeah, cheers, Chair. It was just a fact to, to Ben and Barnaby, the Joint Audits Standards Committee that Warwickshire Police and the PCC have created. Um, and while I totally support the value of member scrutiny, um, there without doubt is some excellent practice being undertaken by Warwickshire Police and the PCC in terms of internal scrutiny, um, of their performance around their framework. Um, so if you'd like to know more, then, then give me a shout or in conversant, contact a bloke called John Anderson who shares the Joint Audits Standards Committee. I think it's probably the best scrutiny group I've ever seen in my professional life.
Thank you. Thanks for that, Dave. Appreciate it. Cam, you've indicated.
Thanks, Chair. All I wanted to say was, um, there is a BLM group in Warwickshire, at Warwickshire County Council, who are linked in with our partners. Um, it's a fantastic group and, you know, if there's a group that you would like to link into, that's the one to link into for, um, around equality and diversity, um, engagement. It's a really good group. I joined it for the first time this week and, uh, yeah, it was, it was really enjoyable. So, um, there's one to link into if you want to.
Thank you, Cam. Right, we have, uh, no further indicated speakers. So, uh, with that, I move on and I lost one piece of paper, isn't that adorable? So we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is, uh, any urgent matters. And I don't believe we have any indicated. So, no, nothing, nothing to report on that. And finally, we need to pass the resolution under item ten, to consider passing the following resolution, that members of the public are excluded from the meeting for items mentioned below, on the grounds that their presence involves disclosure exempted information as defined in paragraph three of schedule twelve A, part one of the Local Government Act nineteen seventy-two. So I formally move that. Do I have it seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded, Councillor Cook, in favour? Thank you very much. And can we just wait ten seconds while we wait for that, for the recording to finish? I'll wait for John to confirm if we can continue.